Someone's in charge.
Train runs on time.
That's it.
Sometimes. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Happy New Year to all of you. And I hope your year is getting off to a wonderful, prosperous, and productive year. This is the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, first meeting of the 2004 calendar year.
2014.
2014. Oh, okay. We'll move on to our first item, our action items, approval of the minutes of November 4th, 2013. May I have a vote for approval of Item 1A, the minutes of November 4th, 2013?
Move it.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Vice Chancellor Waters to introduce Item 1B1, Adoption of the University Investment Policy Statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to present to the committee, Item 1B1, the Adoption of the University Investment Policy Statement for the Optional Retirement Program and Tax-Deferred Annuity Plan. A little bit of background, CUNY sponsors and maintains two employee-defined contribution retirement plans, the Optional Retirement Program, or ORP, and the Tax-Deferred Annuity Plan. Both are defined contribution plans, meaning that each participating employee has an account into which contributions made by CUNY and by the employee are deposited. CUNY has provided a variety of funds into which employees can choose to invest their dollars. As a plan sponsor, CUNY is a fiduciary to the plan participants. A principal responsibility fiduciary in an environment like this is the selection of suitable plan investments and monitoring the investment vehicles to ensure that they remain suitable. This includes examining investment performance, fees, management, and history. In addition, we strive to select a menu of investment choices that will allow each participant to create a diversified portfolio. Because New York Education Law, Article 125A, which established the CUNY ORP, provides that the Board of Trustees will give due consideration to the stability of the contracts used to fund the plan, we believe that an investment policy is a prudent action. The policy will provide CUNY with a clear statement of the objectives and the processes that are going to be followed in selecting and monitoring investments. It will also help to protect the university against a complaint that the funds offered under the plan were unsuitable or inappropriate. A fiduciary is not required to be prescient in choosing investments, only to follow a careful, prudent process in deciding to select or retain a fund. An investment policy provides documentation of that prudent decision-making process. The adoption of an investment policy does not in any way constitute investment advice to plan participants. Its objectives will apply only to the selection of available investments. It will not provide recommendations or advise participants on how to allocate their own accounts among the available investments. Madam Chair, I'd like to present Item 1B1 for approval by the committee.
Thank you. I have, I think, do I have to call for a vote before we can have a discussion?
I'll move it.
Move in second.
So, it's been moved in second, and I have a, it's open for conversation and discussion. First item was, I was inquired, why was this a item of the FSA Committee versus the Committee on Finance? And I'll ask Vice Chancellor Waters to address that item.
The Finance Committee actually has a subcommittee on investments that manages the investments for our endowment. The perspective that retirement funds, however, is a different, more long-term kind of view. And so, we believed that it was the appropriate thing to bring this particular responsibility to the FSA Committee. Having said that, since you also serve on the Finance Committee, and there are others in the university who participate from both the finance side and the FSA side, we think we have enough resources available to make sure that there are prudent decisions being made regarding this investment policy.
So, since Vice Chancellor Waters brought up that I am on both, and Professor Martel, I have looked at this carefully, in particular in light of my licensing. And just wanted to point out a couple of items for the record. One, that we are not giving investment advice. Nothing we do is to be construed as investment advice. But having said that, if you look and see what the responsibilities of this committee are, they are substantial, in my opinion, and we have to take them very seriously. And so, I just wanted to go through a number of them so that we're on the record, and we need to make sure that in addition to, as we approve, today we're merely approving the policy, but we need to establish protocols as to how this policy will be reviewed and implemented. And, you know, certain items is the process for selecting the managers, reviewing the managers. The legislation calls for a periodic review. So, we need a process which will not be established clearly today, but, and what does periodic review mean? This committee will have to decide what periodic does that mean, monthly, quarterly, yearly? Those are all things that I think we need to have discussions about. And Vice Chancellor Waters mentioned that there are staffing zoom within her office.
Actually, within finance, in the budget and finance area.
So, we'd like to have an understanding and to meet. I know on the investment portfolio side, we have met the people who are responsible for developing those strategies and implementing those strategies. I think this committee should equally meet and understand who they are. I know we had a consultant who worked with you on this, and so, that consultant, I think we met him once before. And then, the legislation also speaks to the need to provide fee schedules and to review the reasonableness of those schedules. If you look at appendices A, B, C, and D, they go through who the current providers and fund managers are, and we would like to understand how those fund managers were selected and what variables we will be using. They have what the benchmarks are. But in short, I think, and I'm going to call on Professor Martel to assist me in this, in developing what we believe are appropriate benchmarks and protocol for examining how we should review these, given that the language speaks to us, speaks to our role in reviewing and recommending. And so, while we're not giving investment advice, we are reviewing those who do give investment advice. So, my recommendation, Professor Martel, and others, but of course, I'm looking at him because Terry and I have done this in another committee, is to make sure that we work together in establishing those protocols to make sure that we are implementing this in the best way. Professor Martel?
Subject to my licensing requirements, I'll be happy to join in this endeavor.
Thank you. We're both looking at subject to our licensing. I have checked with my compliance officer, Professor Martel, so we are, we're not in violation, given all that we have said about what our role is. But we will work with the Vice Chancellor's office to make sure that we execute our fiduciary responsibilities as a committee, but also do it in a prudent manner. Are there any other questions?
Yeah. Is there, coming from any of the stakeholders, dissatisfaction with the range of options that they currently have for their retirement plans?
We have not heard of any dissatisfaction.
We're not aware of any unhappiness.
Not aware.
Okay. The second thing I'd like to say is when we, well, will we get a chance to review as a committee, the recommendations about the, how frequently different kinds of reviews are done? Because I think review of performance may be one, on one schedule, but a different schedule could be change in fee structure, which could be reviewable when the fee structure change is announced, or shortly after. So, I think, okay, so the committee should get a report, I think, that lays out what is a reasonable, I mean, for performance, I think yearly is probably reasonable. For fee structure, I think if it's material, it should be looked at when it, when the structures change, or, you know, within short time thereafter.
And first of all, let me apologize, let me welcome our new member, and before I call upon him.
I thought I was at the Fiscal Affairs.
You thought you were escaping, but everything is money, as you well.
I have what, to me, is an elementary question. This is a new policy?
We don't currently have an investment policy. We should have one.
I'm talking about, so who did this role? Who performed this role yesterday?
Well, to be honest, no one has been looking at this in a systemic way. We have, we have, TIAA Creff is one of the providers of the, for investments on the ORP side. We also have MetLife. We also have a broker called Halliday. So, we are, we have monitored what they've been offering, and we know that there's a diversified portfolio available. But in terms of looking at fees and at looking at performance, we actually had a working committee set up as we were preparing this policy. And there has been a working committee looking at some of these things, but we have not had a policy giving us the responsibility to actually do it until now.
So, nobody was doing it? Even though we have a fiduciary obligation?
That's correct.
It's a good thing we're doing it well.
Yeah. It's a good thing we haven't been challenged on that.
That's correct.
You know, one interesting thing the committee could decide is, you can go with very low index fees, structure, which is low fees.
Sure.
Or you could go for more specialized stuff, which of course was going to cost you more.
That's right.
And you could so differentiate.
Right.
Looking over the list, it's hard to tell into which category some of these funds fall.
I must tell you that we have had faculty, particularly faculty in economics and finance, but, you know, taking very hard looks at some of the investment vehicles and making those decisions, and arguing with us if we didn't offer some things that, in our opinion, might have been more risky, because they felt they could manage the funds. So, it's going to be a challenge.
And also, that brings another point that I had on here, and understanding, there's a comment in here that nothing that the committee does is to be construed as giving investment advice, and they speak to the participants' role in, quote, "educating him or herself," and making his independent decisions. But what is the process for informing, educating, as to, I mean, particularly, what's the process now?
Well, right now, as someone signs up for a fund, and they decide how they want to allocate their money, and there are investment advisors from the various companies. So, TIAA provides investment advice, Halliday has someone who will talk to you about how to allocate money. But we have not been putting forward, because we don't want to give advice, you know, any kind of recommendations as to how people shall allocate their money. So, they really rely on some of the expertise that is provided to us by the vendors.
But I guess my question is generally, I mean, in my firm, there is a day when we invite the providers in, and the staff come in, and they listen to the providers, and they know that the providers will be there. Do we do it similar?
Yes, we do. We do have opportunities for people to come in and to hear from the providers. You know, unfortunately, when you first sign up, a lot of times, your investment horizons are very different than they are when you're getting ready to retire. And so, I think one of the challenges is getting people to look at this on a more regular basis. But we do have opportunities for people to listen and hear from the advisors. We have opportunities for people to hear from Social Security and things like that as well. So, it's all part of a path.
This will be a very interesting line. I mean, now that we have a policy, and we have some responsibility, this will be an interesting balance, because if we want to get too prescriptive, then where, where does that line?
No, I mean.
Almost implicitly end up giving investment advice by limiting the choices that you create.
There are, there have been several actions taken recently about the role of advisors and directors and fees, et cetera. So, I'm sure Mr. Martel and I will be closely looking and monitoring them and make sure that we walk that thin line. But there have been a lot of cases about what the fiduciary responsibilities of directors are, and almost we're taking on that role of a director. So, I keep pointing to Martel. That is not to say that I wouldn't want and invite any and everybody to participate, but I know Professor Martel has a direct knowledge in this area. So, that would be my recommendation, that we, at our next meeting, begin to have a conversation.
Well, I would suggest a separate meeting, a working meeting.
A working meeting, but it, and then after, back to the committee, to talk about fees, comparative, and what the protocol should be.
Let's be clear for the record, that the fees we're talking about are fees to the providers of the investment advice. They are not fees that in any way, shape, or form come to us.
Absolutely.
Right. Nothing.
Absolutely.
Just be clear.
But we're still bound to weed out providers that have unjustifiably high fees. And we're supposed to do something about checking performance once in a while. Well, I'm quite uncomfortable with the fact that we haven't had this policy in place. So, I would like to suggest that we make every effort to move this forward to the point where we at least have a policy, where we're starting some level of modest, at least modest, review of fees and performance, so that we're not naked against, you know, when we have an obligation to be active, to do stuff, be active. I'm very uncomfortable with what our past situation has been, and I think we're lucky that some disgruntled employee didn't like the performance of his plan, didn't come up with a challenge to our inactivity.
I think at this point, what we are recommending is that we move forward with the adoption of this policy, and that we continue to work on the operating and procedures to implement the policy as we go forward, but that we have a motion on to approve the policy, and yes.
To my mind, based upon the limited time in the recent past that I've been a trustee, it seems to me that perhaps the thought that this is not for the Fiscal Affairs Committee, but for us, just.
There will be overlap, certainly.
They might have more, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I think it's coming to us because it involves employees, and we're in the committee for things that involve employee, you know, rights and so forth. But I think it needs to go to both committees, because I think there's more expertise on the review of the various providers. There's more expertise in the Fiscal Affairs Committee.
So, again, you know, what I would suggest, the administration has made it that it comes to our committee, but that we will work on the procedures and the working process. That's why I wanted to meet the staff, and we, as a committee, will make recommendations as to which staff and which departments, not specific individuals, but who should have responsibility of oversight, et cetera, and to make sure that the appropriate staff people with the knowledge and insight that are necessary are involved and engaged in this. So, recommendation that we make that recommendation, and we meet those people and understand what their roles and responsibilities will be. So, are there any other questions, comments? And just for clarification, today we are making a recommendation that we approve the policy, with the understanding that a subcommittee will move forward with developing working procedures and protocol for implementation of that policy.
Do you have a motion yet?
Yes, we do.
And then there was a friendly amendment to it. So, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Will President Mitchell Wallerstein, please join us at the table? Thank you. And you will present Items 1B2 and 1B3, Naming Opportunities at Baruch.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. These two items are two exciting developments at the college. One allows us to pursue and to implement the long-sought dream of having a student center at Baruch, which we've never had. We would join the ranks of Queens and Brooklyn Colleges, that both have those. And we've been fortunate enough to have a very generous donor commit to a $3 million gift to name the student center, and all we need is to find a place to put it. And we are actively pursuing that, challenging real estate environment in Midtown South. So, it's been something we've been working very hard on, but we are optimistic that we are on the verge of finding a solution. So, this first item is to name the Alan G. and Mary E. Aaronson Student Center at Baruch College.
And we'll give all seven of them as a group, so you can get up to the second one as well.
And the second item concerns the other, or, and other significant development at Baruch in the last two years, which is the fact that most of you, I think, may be aware, we have succeeded in convincing the City of New York to close the section of 25th Street between 3rd Avenue and Lexington Avenue, and for the first time, give Baruch College a campus. And the plaza area, as we call it, has been an extraordinary development for the college. Students have flocked to it, maybe not tonight, but when the weather is warmer, there are literally hundreds of students enjoying the plaza, and which is Wi-Fi accessible as well. And again, we have managed to find some Baruch alumni, in this case, from Southern California, a group of Baruch alumni who are there in Los Angeles, who are funding the ultimate, the conversion of what we call the interim plaza, which is, as it currently exists, into a beautiful plaza that will have trees and benches and a performance space and a variety of other amenities. And together with CUNY, because CUNY has made a very generous commitment, and we thank the university for helping to, helping us to finance this, we will work with the Department of Transportation of the city to develop this new permanent plaza. And the two leaders of this effort are our alumni, Lawrence Field and Daniel Clivner, and so we are proposing to name it the Clivner Field Plaza.
Wonderful. May I have a motion for approval of Items 1B2 and 1B3?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations. President Jennifer Robb?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to present to the committee Items 2B4, 2B13. As many of you know, we are in the midst of a $45 million capital campaign to totally reform and renovate and really rejuvenate Hunter College's main campus library. We are $9 million short of that goal, and today I would like to present almost $2.4 million worth of gifts that have gone to this capital campaign. The library is being renovated totally through private funds, plus some REZO-A money, but funds from the CUNY system. So, it's a very ambitious project, and we're very excited about these gifts. The first gift, 2B4, is in honor of Dr. Susan Burshod, who's a 1975 graduate of Hunter College, a member of the Hunter College Foundation since 2004, a consistent and strong donor, and a very successful dermatologist with a practice at Mount Sinai, and she has contributed a half a million dollars to name the conference desk. The second gift, 2B5, is named for Charlotte Frank. It's the elevator lobby. Many of you know Dr. Frank, who has had many very high-ranking and important positions in New York City public education activities, and she receives her master's degree from Hunter College and has also been a member of the Hunter College Foundation, and that gift was for $150,000. 2B6 is named after one of my beloved predecessors, Jacqueline Grenon Wexler, who was the president of Hunter College, actually when I was a high school student there. She had a planned gift in her honor from the United Technologies Corporation for the library, and when she passed last year, the gift of a half a million dollars was made available and allowed us to name the new welcome desk at the library after Dr. Wexler. The next gift is from a Hunter College trustee, who is not a member of our alumni community, somebody who has a very similar story to many people at Hunter College, from an immigrant family, went to Stuyvesant High School, is now managing director at Goldman Sachs, Abby Marotra, and he has named one of our library study areas for $25,000. The next gift is from Paul and Florrie Kagan, for $1 million, and that's 2B8. Paul is a 1958 graduate of Hunter College, has been a longtime supporter, was one of the leaders in the development of the cable television industry, and has been a member of our, very supportive member of our community, and made this most recent gift of $1 million to name the major study center on the first floor of the library. The next gift, 2B9, is from Ada Paluso, who was a longtime faculty member of Hunter College, both an alum and a long-term faculty member, retired a few years ago as the longtime chair of our math department. She's a consistent donor, member of our Hunter College Foundation, and the $100,000 gift is named the circulation and reserve desk for the new library. We then developed a series of study labs that are connected for students to work together in collaborative groups. The first one is named for Harriet Gruber, a 1951 Hunter alum, who's been a member of our Hunter College Foundation, and that gift was for $35,000. The second is named for Joan Grave, for $25,000. Joan was a nursing student graduating in 1960, runs our nursing advisory board, provided the dean's endowment of $1 million for the nursing dean, and is also a member of the Hunter College Foundation. The next lab is from Abby and Anton Levy. Abby is on our Hunter College Foundation Board, for both her grandmothers went to Hunter College, and we gave a $25,000 gift for one of these study labs. And then finally, Craig McPherson, who is a 1993 graduate of Hunter College, and we're very proud to be getting this type of engagement from our younger alum, has a very successful career as the head of development of the convent of Sacred Heart, and Craig made a $25,000 gift to name one of the study labs. So, all told, these gifts total $2,385,000, and we are very pleased to ask the board's support for the naming resolutions connected to these very generous gifts.
I'll move them.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And will interim executive vice chancellor and university provost, Julia Riggley, please come forward.
Yes, I'm here. We have six distinguished professor nominees. The first is Arthur Aptor from Baruch. He is a world-class logician, educated at MIT, where he got both his undergraduate and doctoral degrees. He joined Baruch in 1986, and is also a member of the doctoral faculty, the Graduate Center. He is most renowned for his work in SET theory. He has published over 120 articles in national and international journals, and has delivered invited lectures at over 85 institutions. He's received many grants and awards, including from the National Science Foundation. The second is David Joclet, at the Graduate Center. He comes to CUNY from Yale University's Department of Art History, where he's currently a Carnegie professor. He's an internationally renowned scholar, recognized for his mastery of both contemporary and modern art history and criticism. He earned both his undergraduate degree and his doctorate from Harvard. He's also done work at MIT. Prior to graduate school, he served as curator of the Institute of Contemporary Art in Boston. He is the author of four books, single-authored books, including After Art from Princeton, Feedback from MIT Press, American Art Since 1945, and Infinite Reg. Feedback from MIT Press, American Art Since 1945, and Infinite Regress, Marcel Duchamp, and many edited books. The third candidate is Richard McCoy, a distinguished professor nominee from Queens College. He's an eminent scholar of the early modern period of English literature, and he joined Queens in 1979. He is also an active member of the English doctoral program at the Graduate Center. He's received grants and awards from the National Endowment for the Humanities, the Guggenheim Foundation, and the American Council of Learned Societies. He is the author of four books, the most recent of which Faith in Shakespeare was published by Oxford University Press this year. His books won many awards and prizes. Next candidate is Jeffrey Mongraine from the College. He is a renowned ceramicist, and he joined Hunter's Art Department in 1995 as an associate professor. It is being said that he has changed the field of contemporary ceramics as radically as Raymond Carver influenced the short story and Andy Warhol changed printmaking. His work is included in the collections of 26 museums around the world, and he's represented the United States in 17 museum biennale over the past 10 years. Of the three primary American museums dedicated to contemporary ceramics culture, two have given him solo exhibitions, and the third, the Museum of Art and Design in New York, has scheduled a show for this year. Next candidate is Joan Richardson, also from the Graduate Center. Internationally recognized for her scholarship in American literature and intellectual history, Professor Richardson is a daughter. She got her bachelor's degree at Queens College and her doctorate at the Graduate Center. She rose from adjunct lecturer to full professor of English at LaGuardia Community College and then transitioned to the Graduate Center. She is a prolific writer and researcher. In fact, her work occupies many large boxes. She's been acclaimed for her studies of Wallace Stevens. She's also written extensively on pragmatism, including books published by Cambridge. And her current project is, for which she received a Guggenheim Fellowship, is titled Images: Shadows of Divine Things, A Secular Spiritual Autobiography. And lastly, we have a mathematician from the College of Staten Island. He is one of the world's leading theorists of probability. He was educated at Harvard, where he earned his undergraduate degree, and at Princeton, where he received his doctorate. He joined the College of Staten Island in 1986 and the following year, doctoral faculty at the Graduate Center. He is the author of two monographs published by the American Mathematical Society, a book published by the Cambridge Studies and Advanced Mathematics, and over 100 refereed articles. His research is being supported repeatedly by the NSF, and in 2005, he became a fellow at the Institute of Mathematical Statistics. Present to you these six nominees.
Outstanding. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. And once again, congratulations to the university.
Is the art historian on the full-time tenured faculty at Yale?
Absolutely.
Because I don't recognize what a Carnegie professor, that's just a regular chair that somebody has at Yale.
It's funded there.
Well, Yale has a very distinguished art history faculty, so.
Arguably the most, arguably the most distinguished contemporary art historian.
Arguably the most distinguished in the world. So to get somebody from that faculty to come here.
Wants to hang around with you.
Is a pretty good thing, I think.
Vice Chancellor Waters will introduce item 1B20, revisions to the university's policy on domestic violence and the workplace.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to present to the committee the revised policy on domestic violence in the workplace, item 1B20. On June 23, 2008, in response to the order from the governor, the board of trustees adopted a university policy on domestic violence in the workplace. Last July, the New York State Office for the Prevention of Domestic Violence issued a memorandum requiring state agencies to update their policies to outline clear procedures for handling orders of protection that employees provide to them. Accordingly, we've updated CUNY's policy to adopt the language suggested by the state, which advises employees to bring their orders of protection to the attention of the director or deputy director of campus security and public safety. I now present the item.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you. That completes our policy calendar. We will now move on to Chancellor's University Report item. May I ask interim president Stuart Suss to join us to present item 1C1, an appointment at Kingsborough Community College. Good afternoon.
I am pleased to come before you today to urge your acceptance of my recommendation to appoint Kingsborough's Dean of Student Affairs, Peter Cohen, as our college's vice president of student affairs. At Kingsborough, we believe that student success at a community college rests on no single program or initiative. Rather, we are fond of saying it is more like a jigsaw puzzle. That is, it's necessary to assemble many pieces and fit them together in order to build a coherent picture. In our case, that picture is a successful college student. The programs operated by our Office of Student Affairs are important places in that jigsaw puzzle, and Peter Cohen has been instrumental in conceiving, planning, and implementing those initiatives. He supervises a division of our college consisting of more than 50 full-time staff, more than 50 adjuncts, and more than 50 part-time staff. Working in close coordination, Office of Academic Affairs, and with our academic departments, Peter has built a cooperative and trusting relationship between student and academic affairs. He has been especially effective in developing innovative academic advisement and personal counseling strategies and leading college efforts to address challenges in developmental mathematics faced by multiple repeaters and by incoming and transfer students. Peter Cohen will come to this position with a strong academic ability. He is a certified social worker and with over 25 years of experience in higher education. He is firm but fair with students and is well-liked by them. As a key member of my senior staff, I trust Peter's judgment and appreciate his creativity and good humor. And most importantly, I can always rely on his honest feedback. I wholeheartedly endorse his appointment as vice president of student affairs and request your approval. This is Peter Cohen.
Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations. If you'd like to, you can address the committee.
I've dedicated my career to Kingsborough, our students and City University of New York, and I'm humbled by this honor. I'm very appreciative, and I thank President Suss and the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. We will now ask President Diane Call to join us to present items 1C2 and 1C5, two appointments at Kingsborough Community College.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm very pleased to present to you two candidates who are longtime colleagues of mine, and I ask your support. First is for the appointment of Denise Ward as our interim vice president for pre-college continuing education and workforce development. Denise began her work with Queensborough at 2007. She has this extraordinary blend of business experience in finance and banking, academic experience as an instructor, faculty member, and certainly in continuing education and pre-collegiate programs. She's really brought to bear her philosophy of partnerships. It's something that characterizes all that she does. I'm very appreciative of her work, and under her leadership, we've been able to bring together all of our pre-collegiate programs, such as the CLIP program, CUNY Start, 21st Century Grants, et cetera. And most recently, Denise was the main architect and leader for the development of our CUNY 2020 proposal in the health field. It has drawn a great deal of attention, and we're very pleased that actually Secretary Kathleen Sebelis has asked to come to the campus to speak with her and her colleagues. I am always appreciative of Denise's openness to collaboration. I think she has managed to bring together all kinds of partnerships with our community, with our public schools, and certainly among our faculty. I hope you will support her appointment.
Thank you.
Is she a candidate for the permanent position?
She would be, yes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My second candidate to bring to you is Dr. Karen B. Steele, with considerations her appointment as interim vice president for strategic planning, assessment, and institutional effectiveness. Dr. Steele has been with the college for over a quarter of a century. She is probably one of the most experienced members of the CUNY community in terms of assessment and accreditation. She will lead our thinking in terms of the overarching issues that we face, specifically in the areas of student learning outcomes and retention in particular. I am very proud to be a colleague. I believe she has enormous respect among our faculty and our colleagues throughout the university, and I ask you for your support.
And is she going to be a candidate for the permanent position?
She would be, yes.
Thank you.
Do you may have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Are they here? Are your candidates here today?
Yes, they are.
Oh, well, would you ask them to come forward?
Dr. Karen Steele and Denise Ward.
Congratulations, and thank you for your continued service.
Do you want us to say anything?
If you would like to.
Well, it's a privilege to be able to work in this capacity, and I do have a good bit of experience. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue it.
Thank you.
This is quite an honor, having, and you just mentioned, my career started in banking. And the first part of your meeting here was very familiar to me because I was a bank trust officer for the larger plans in the United States and overseas. But we also were fiduciary for quite a few colleges, Penn, Northwestern, Duke. And so I sat around the table, asking these questions. Questions were asked of us, either as fiduciaries trustee, how do we ensure that we're choosing the right investments, I mean, investment lines. So you're on the right track, what I heard today. And I am not surprised that you haven't gotten a complaint, just because of the wealth of investments in TIF craft. I mean, they really cover, cover the gamut. So good luck to you. I just wanted to mention that. But then I moved on to training and development at the bank, and then I finally got into college teaching, and, which I started my career at, I mean, my education at City College, a math major, wanting to become a math professor. That didn't quite work out, but I finally made it to be a professor of finance, et cetera. So I am thrilled to have this career at Queensborough Community College. It's an extraordinary institution. I'm amazed, and I've said this from the first year I was there, it's a two-year college that thinks it's a university in and of itself. I'm always amazed at the research that's brought to the table. I'm amazed at the wonderful faculty that are so willing to work with continuing education and to create programs for workforce development, and also all of the pre-college programs that, you know, we're really moving ahead on quite a bit. So thank you so much. Thank you for your continued service.
Now we'll have President Wallerstein, will you rejoin us, to introduce the new vice president for information services and dean of the library?
Once again, it's my great pleasure to present to you Dr. Arthur Downing for the position of vice president for information services and dean of the library. As many of the fields of library science and information services are changing very dramatically and very rapidly, and we at Baruch have been very fortunate to have Arthur Downing leading this effort at the college. He was appointed in 1997 as professor of library science and also as chief librarian. And then in 2002, he assumed a second title as assistant vice president for information technology and chief information officer. And since then, he has been working assiduously to integrate the work of the library with our information technology services. And as we look down the road, we see, of course, accelerating convergence and integration of these activities. And so Baruch has taken a step, which I believe is pioneering for CUNY, in that we are creating a vice presidency for all information services, including institutional research. So under Arthur's purview will be all of the analysis and development of data and mobilization of information. And we think we have the ideal person for that in Dr. Downing, who received his PhD from Rutgers University in 2008 in communication, information, and library studies. So it's my great pleasure to present him to you and to ask for your approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your services.
I simply want to take the opportunity to say how much I value working at CUNY. I look forward to what we're going to be able to accomplish ahead, and really to thank you for the opportunity to continue.
Well, thank you for your service. Well, can Morse from the Office of Academic Affairs present item 1C4, an appointment of a faculty member at the CUNY School of Journalism?
Madam Chair, the Office of Academic Affairs requests that the board of trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Travis Fox as associate professor in the CUNY School of Journalism, effective January 7, 2014, waiving the terminal degree requirement in bylaw 11.5.1A. The CUNY School of Journalism wishes to appoint Travis Fox to its faculty with a professorial title. Although Mr. Fox lacks the requisite graduate appointment, his professional credentials more than compensate. The School of Journalism is expanding its expertise in visual storytelling, a new field that lies at the intersection of broadcast news and web video. Mr. Fox has been in the forefront of this field. He's won dozens of awards from the National Press Photographers Association and has been nominated for eight Emmy Awards, winning one of them. Most recently, Fox has worked with Frontline, following 10 years at the Washington Post, an outstanding teacher. He is currently an adjunct faculty member of the CUNY School of Journalism and the Columbia Journalism School.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Section 2 advises the committee of a number of reappointments of faculty with early tenure pursuant to the bylaws. These items appear for information purposes only and do not require a report or a vote. And last but clearly not least, we will have the Vice Chancellor Waters' report.
Given the conversation at the beginning of this meeting, I think I will be focusing my reports going forward on the investment committee and the workings of the working group. And so I will skip this month and look forward to next month's report.
I like that kind of short one. Are there any questions, comments? There being none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. Happy New Year. Thank you very much.